What's going on, Chooms? Welcome back. My name is John John the Wise. You are listening to Night City Council. I am here with the illustrious mayor of Balance Town himself, James Hutt. James, how are you?
I'm doing great, John John. How are you doing?
I'm doing great.
I feel so fresh, so, uh, so light on my feet. Uh, there is a monkey that is not on my back anymore. Um, instead, he is at the printers.
Yeah, if you guys don't know what James is talking about, we are counting down to Black Chrome. It is headed to the printers. That means it'll be in your hands sometime in the near future. So today, we are actually gonna preview something cool from the book. And I gotta tell you guys, I'm excited, but that's all I can say, okay? That's all I could say. That's all I could say, and we're gonna talk about one thing in this show, and then in the later episodes in between, the release of Black Chrome, we're gonna reveal some other cool stuff as well. So thank you, James, by the way, for doing that for us. We really appreciate it.
I couldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't reveal something. We didn't show it to you, man.
Exactly. True. This is very true. So, uh, but other than that, we're also gonna answer some community questions, so stick around for that, and, uh, yeah. I hope you guys enjoy the show. So James, have you been playing any games lately or anything?
I've been gaming a little bit. Um, I've actually been playing a little video games lately. I've been doing some personal writing. I've been playing Axiom Verge 2. Really cool cyberpunk-like, you know, indie game on, uh, free on PlayStation right now, so, you know.
Is that the one where you fly around in a, in a car?
No, that is, that is another one, but that one's good too. Um, Cloud City, I think.
Is that what it is?
Cloud something. That one's good.
Yeah, it's like Blade Runner world, right?
Yeah, yeah, Blade Runner-style taxi game, I think. This one's, this one's a, uh, it's set in like Antarctica. It's a sequel uh, to the first Axiom Verge, and, um, it's like, uh, you know, a lot of nanoshines stuff, and you go to other worlds, and it gets kinda transhumanist. I like it.
Gotcha. Yeah, I've seen people go with the cyberpunk genre. They'll like, they'll go like, let's take it to space. You know, we've done it in cyberpunk, the Artel Saurian as well with the High Riders. But, uh, as far as I know, I don't think we've ever gone full out there in space with aliens or anything.
Indeed. Um, anyway, uh, how about, uh, Black Chrome, the, the book where, uh?
Alright, yeah, I know.
And, you know, as much as I love the other cyberpunk work, we're talking about another one right now.
I'm trying to ease people in. I know they're at the edge of their seats. They're like, shut up, John. Just show us the damn Black Chrome.
Tease them, and this is, that's kinda rough, man.
Well, if you guys are watching on-
What else you wanna talk about?
Yeah, if you-
Talk about Black Chrome.
If you're watching on YouTube, there's chapters, alright? You can go to the chapters, you can skip around, and you're gonna skip to this point. Hey, we're now gonna talk about Black Chrome, alright?
Black Chrome time.
The first thing we're gonna be talking about here is, uh, an amazing little treat, the K-Tech Doberman 500.
Uh, so this is a new drone, uh, where I need a game. It's like a corporate companion dog type thing. Um, it could also be a police dog drone. Um, so it has multiple use cases for your game. Um, and, uh, one of my favorite things apart, uh, one of my favorite things about it, um, is that it allows, um, a really easy way to insert a drone enemy into an encounter. Um, you just think of anytime you would use a police dog or a dog in a professional circumstance, and you can replace it with this animal. With this drone, and that way, it adds, uh, you know, maybe there's a lot of them. Maybe it's a whole kennel of them, right? Um, and they have easy-to-understand modes. This is how they run. They run using the similar rules to the, uh, All About Drones um, article from Interface Red 1. John John, why don't you, why don't you, uh, I, I think I've, I think I've gilded the lily enough. Let's just read, read it out, man. It, for the people in the podcast.
Sure, sure. So what we're talking about here is basically a, a security dog that is a full cyberdog. Anytime, like you said, where you think a dog will be present, like, let's say you're, you're breaking into a corporate's house. He might have a couple of these. You're breaking into a corporate archive, or maybe a booster gang hideout, where they, a tech got their hands on one of these and made it for the booster gang. And it, it has its own stats, it has its own rules, it has its own pricing, and it has these amazing modes. Standby mode, sentry mode, and tracking mode. And I won't give away too much about what they do, but they, you basically, it, it's additional rules to this thing to make it a lot more interesting.
Wait, wait, wait. I thought we were just gonna tell them.
Oh, are we telling them? Hey, tell them.
Yeah, I don't know. This is the reveal, man. Why are, I was like, I said, John John, read it.
Okay, my bad. So-
From the top, please, sir.
So this is developed for Sovoil. The Doberman 500 is K-Tech's answer to unreliable security labor. The four-legged combat drone is designed to guard important people and deliver maximum punishment to anyone who dares to make a move against them. And unlike human employees, it can't call in sick, take a bribe, or fall asleep on guard duty. So there's a little bit more lore there for all of you. Uh, it is a personal drone, and it is linked to an agent, uh, and it requires five interrupted minutes, and both agents must remain within six meters per yard of the drone, or yards of the drone, uh, the entire time for it to be operational, right?
Yeah, yeah, so it, um, it's within a certain amount of person. It's, it's like, uh, it's meant to be a dog handler thing. Like, there will be a dog handler with the dog.
Yeah, so it has to stay close to the handler. Um, it has a roaming range of 50 meters. That's pretty huge. Um, it cannot be countered, uh, cannot be countered as an eight-move, 11 SP, 25 HP Combat Number 10. That means you roll 1d10, and you add 10 to it to determine if it evades, it attack, what it does to hit. And, uh, it counts as a medium-sized four-legged combat drone equipped with the following: exotic, very heavy melee weapon, a motion detector, and olfactory suite, so it can smell you.
And it can track the ascent.
Yep, and it has a motion detector.
I believe using its combat number too, so it's pretty good at tracking.
Yeah, so its perception checks, all that stuff, that's all, it's all gonna come from that 1d10 plus 10, which is a really good base.
Easier if you're a GM.
Yeah, there you go.
Without it like being like, "Uh, I gotta run a robot and a human." Of other stuff.
Yeah, I love the combat number. It's great. That's, that's the inspiration between, behind my three-goon method was the combat number. Uh, so in standby mode, the Doberman is powered on but not operating. It's, it cannot move nor can it make or dodge attacks. That's when it's just like docked, basically, right?
Yeah, that's charging mode, basically.
And then in sentry mode, the Doberman 500 follows within eight meters or yards of its linked agent, constantly scanning for the threats to the user using its motion sensor, olfactory suite, and onboard programming. Um, so, can you clarify with this eight meters linked to an agent and the roaming being 50 meters? Is the, can it go 50 meters or could it go eight meter, only eight?
Um, I believe that it can do stuff up to 50 meters away as like a far range, but it's a robot, so it's gonna wanna go back into the, the host area.
So the main host area is within eight meters?
Don't think of it, so this isn't an AI-powered robot. This is a robot. Um, so it has a linked agent, and it uses that as a home base. And it'll reduce, and then come back.
So it patrols an eight-meter radius, but it can travel as far as 15 meters?
If it needs, if it needs, or find, or an attack command, uh, is given, stuff like that.
Gotcha, from a verbal command without an action. So it, it costs no action to call it back.
Yes, uh, what that means is that the, um, it's not, uh, this is more important for like actual in-combat gameplay. What it means is that there's not a NPC spending their action just doing "Go!"
Gotcha, gotcha.
Because that feels very board gamey, if that makes- Um, realistically, talking is a free action, and that's why we wanted to make it that speed.
Yeah, totally. It's not like a JRPG, you know, where like, I choose, you attack.
Didn't wanna make to, to make it feel like a pet handler character class, right? Um, which is why most of the, uh, you know, pets you can summon in cyberpunk don't require an action to tell them to do a thing.
Yep, gotcha. Uh, so that's sentry mode. Uh, tracking mode, in tracking mode, it can use its, uh, olfactory suite to smell to track a specific scent shared with it by its user. So presenting a scent to the Doberman, uh, in the form of an article of clothing or something, it requires an action. So that requires an action.
Yes, so that's, um, that's because you're using it, you're switching modes.
Got you. It uses its combat number for all the tracking skills. Uh, the user can always call the Doberman back to it using their agent without an action, just like before. And it cannot make attacks while in tracking mode, but will dodge melee attacks, and it cannot dodge ranged attacks in this mode. So I saw that twice. It cannot dodge ranged attacks in this mode. Uh, is that only in the tracking mode or is it also in sentry?
It's just not meant to dodge range. It can't dodge bullets.
Oh, gotcha. You're, you're talking about the whole reflex eight thing.
Yeah.
It, it basically can't do that. Gotcha. That's good that you mentioned that, cuz, you know, that is something to think about. Now, other than the, the Doberman-
Get your bullet dodging for the tech.
So other than the Doberman 500, there's also the ball, as we call it. Uh, you go, you wanna talk about the ball?
So, um, why don't you flip over to the ball? Uh, you're, you're welcome to share these, just put these up on the, the feed, by the way.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do.
Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah. Um, just for the podcast listeners, um, the ball is a paintball. It's very ergon exotic in the, um, core rulebook. And, uh, when you fire it at somebody, and they get hit by it, it becomes much easier for the Doberman to track them, and it's very hard to wash off.
Plus four to their tracking skill, so they'll be rolling on a 1d10 plus 14.
Rolling a 1d10 plus 14, which is probably gonna find you.
Yeah.
Um, so this is, this is, you know, this is you're at a protest or something, and they're firing this off, and then they're gonna try to get you later, right? When there are, you know, all those cameras and whatnot.
Yeah.
It's not like they, about it, but, you know, it's, uh, it gives that level of extra gameplay on top of all this stuff. And frankly, it's a, you know, it's, it's a real-world thing. This type of stuff is deployed against, uh, protesters and all of, uh, they're all manner of like scent-tracking-based, uh, weapons out there right now.
That's interesting.
Anyway.
Well, it's very, it's very, uh, much on course with the, with the lore of this, this animal. Um, I've also find it interesting that you get a plus two on your tracking skill if you have the olfactory boost chipware.
Yeah, cuz you're, um, it may be designed for the dog, but, uh, if you're, you know, putting metal in your own nose, then you have the same nose as the dog. It's not like your nose is different than their nose.
Yeah, I just think it's so cool.
On it too. So if you wanted to be your own tracking dog, you could totally do that. Um, that's one of the cool parts about, you know, the, the nature of the system being modular. Uh, you can come up with those cool edge cases, uh, for characters. You know, if you wanna be a detective, right? You know, take a bite out of crime, you can do that.
That's right. You can, and now you got the nose for it too.
Yeah.
I like that idea that you could be, you basically have the same nose technology as whatever's in that dog.
Yeah. I mean, it would be different?
No, no, it's not. Um, okay, well, that's the, uh, that is the general gear security that we are gonna be talking about today is the K-Tech Doberman. That's it. Um, there's so much more. I mean, so much more. Um, and-
Plus, it's on the cover.
Yeah, uh, and, and it's, uh, this is just like one taste of things to come, so stick around for other shows. We'll bring up some other stuff, and as we get closer, you'll learn more and more about Black Chrome.
So, the quick pitch, look, if you're here, I, I know you're probably gonna get it, but, uh, if you, here, here's why, here's something that will, they'll, you know, make you feel better, maybe. Um, these items are distinct from each other. These are unique items. This is not 90 different things and the rest of it is shovelware. This is 175 of our best ideas next to each other. It's so much art. Anyway, that's the, that's the short version. Uh, narratively distinct items, that they're all gonna have a place for someone at the game, and that person might be the GM too. Not just for players.
It's every, everything has a story, everything has care, everything has art, uh, for it, and also everything gives player agency is one of the biggest things, cuz as a game master, you're not gonna remember all the little things you give your players, but your players remember all the things they have, and they're gonna throw these obstacles at you, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. They're gonna say, "Oh, wait, I have that thing that you gave me that lets me do this," and it's like, "Oh, well, look at you."
Look, look at you. Is that how you view your play?
That's, I literally, I say, "Well, look at you." Yeah.
Texas?
Literally, anyone that's played my game has heard me say, "Well, look at you."
Alright, alright.
Alright.
Any questions? What are we doing now?
Yeah, I got plenty of questions for you, so let's see here. Uh, we got questions of all kinds. Um, let's see.
Anyone ask for romance advice? Yeah?
No, not yet, which is odd, because obviously we're Casanova's, you know?
Oh, obviously they didn't want our advice.
Exactly.
Hey, you're the only one who's married.
I know, but I think I just got lucky.
You shouldn't take mine.
I tricked her, um, to be with a bum like me.
Good advice. There you go.
Uh, so let's, let's get into it. Uh, we got some questions. We got some mechanics questions. Even after all this time, there's still some mechanics out there.
We're here to answer it.
We're here to answer it. So this is from my boy Tricky Taco. Hey there, boss.
I have heard him.
Yeah, yeah, he's one of the mods on our, on my community Discord, one of the players in my game, great guy. Um, so hey there, boss, new Night City Council question, "When do environmental defenses that are not controlled by a demon with one raid of fire act in initiative? They don't require a demon to work, and only demons explicitly are always on top of the initiative." Uh, there are three in particular that he wanted to know about, the tanglefoot flooring, the goop, and the ceiling wall punchers. So what do you, what do you think? Where are they gonna be in the initiative?
Um, so I'm pretty sure in that section, uh, they say where they enter initiative. Uh, I'm, they may roll into initiative if they're not controlled. Uh, if it just says they enter initiative, but didn't say where, that means they roll in. Um, I am pretty sure that is the case. However, um, if you are the game master, you feel free to have them enter wherever you want, and just when they say, "Yeah, it's not actually the rule." Um, you can say they were tech-modified. Which means I'm right.
There you go. I'm gonna look it up real quick, uh, just-
Influent. Um, I'm pretty sure they do it on trigger, so when the trigger happens, they go in nigh immediately, I'm pretty sure. They go on in the trigger. If the trigger says that they then enter the initiative queue, then it's a roll. If it says they just go, then they just go. Um, for example, tanglefoot flooring trigger, I believe, is you step onto the area. That means then, that doesn't mean in initiative. Um, they probably then take that spot in initiative on the next round if they repeat an action.
Okay, there you go.
Considering their range, it'd be kind of weird to have them go off like a couple seconds after you step next to the, next to a wall puncher. It'd be like, somebody's like, "I'm gonna punch you when you come near," and you step by and you walk back and they go.
It says they are all automatic, so I think they enter initiative as soon as they come in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, then that means right then. I don't think any of them say they enter initiative, they roll into the initiative queue, they just go.
Yeah. So let's say if combat hasn't started, someone steps on it, triggers it, that technically would start the combat.
You, you get punched, and then you enter the initiative, as everyone goes, "Oh god, what's happening now?"
Yeah. Okay, sounds good. So it, ooh, it is a little bit of a niche. It's out there. Um, but we answered that.
It's a trap. It goes off.
I like that. Okay. Uh, do, this is from Calcifier, "Do vehicle repairs have a price like regular item repairs? Like to buy materials? If so, how do I know that price? If not, what is the reason behind that decision?"
Um, this is the vehicle repair question. This one's-
Look it up.
We've, probably answered this, but let me, it costs nothing.
Okay, yeah, here it is. Uh, "The deviant amount of time it takes you to repair a damaged, destroyed vehicle with a tech skill to perfect condition is based on the amount of damage it has sustained. Minor damage, DV9, three hours. Major damage, DV13, one day. Destroyed, DV17, one week." Uh, nothing about, um, nothing about any pricing.
Yeah, it doesn't cost anything, guy. Uh, the, the reason, and you wanted some question on the reasoning. Um, the reason is that, uh, we want, um, vehicles are inherently tied to a roll ability, uh, which is the roll ability of the Nomad Moto. And, um, vehicles get shot a lot, especially in this action movie pace. You should probably expect your vehicle to be shot every time you get in a combat with it. Um, because of that, it would be kind of mean for us to charge you every time you wanted to patch up one or two HP of damage. And, uh, since it's a story thing that's happening, like, action movie story pacing is causing the damage, frankly, in a more, um, how do I put it? Um, in cyberpunk, if you were actually in the cyberpunk world, and you weren't in, um, your car would not get shot as much as if you were a player character in the cyberpunk world. We just know it happens all the time, and it happens for story pacing reasons and action reasons. And because of that, it's not really a place we wanna penalize the player, just because they exist in an action movie setting. Um, where, you know, cool stuff's happening, Connor Reeves is jumping over cars, um, all that good stuff is happening. Uh, the last thing we wanna do is, I mean, do you like repairing your car in real life? I sure don't.
No, I don't. You don't wanna simulate that?
I don't. Uh, look, I'm fine simulating your rent, but at a certain point, uh, if we simulate every cost, the game will be very, um, it will be very survival mode.
Well, my question to you, James, is according to the lifestyles, would, would it be appropriate for any of the lifestyles to have a car? Even like kibble?
A car?
Yeah.
If you're-
Oops, Jesus.
You can have a car. Um, having a car is just having an object.
Exactly. So anyone can have it, even that, if you're living the kibble lifestyle, so if that's the case, then-
Have at that point would probably be less good, and might not be able to buy the nice window. What, look, the lifestyle is about, can you buy the nice window washer fluid? Can you buy the, do you buy snacks when you go to the gas station? Do you, you know what I mean? Uh, it's all this extra stuff on top of life that really flavors your life. You know, the way your life is styled, after all. Um, if, if, you know, it, it's presented in a way that's to stop players from going like, "There's nothing really better than this that I can do. I have the best armor. I'm great." And, uh, they're talking to like a puddle in an alley where they live. "The world can't get better from here." It's to, it's to remind people that there are people that have it better than you, and there are things that you can do if you did one more job. And, uh, it's a way of gaining the story power of these types of stories that happen at the margins where Edgerunners are. Um, if that makes sense. And that was a, that was a ramble from, from the previous, uh, the reason we don't charge you for car repairs, we just charge you in time.
Yeah.
It's because frankly, while you're doing that, somebody else can do something else. It gives everyone else time to do stuff too, and I don't know. Maybe it, uh, it turns the car off for a time, so that, guess, the Nomad has to walk, or the, or you have to call a cab, or some sort of alternate kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
In case the, in case the GM, like, for some reason, that's one of those things. Um, there's like two big things. When you're writing a story, um, the things that can shut down everything. Number one, phones.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you watch Home Alone, there's a reason why the phone's cut out.
Mm-hmm.
In Home Alone. Um, there's a reason, no one can drive, cuz there's a blizzard.
Or the flash, the flashlight goes out.
Two.
The flashlight, the battery dies. You're like, "Oh, come on."
Oh, now we're in a different scene.
Yeah.
Why do these flashlights always run out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, well, there you go. I hope that answered your question. Calcifier, thank you so much. Uh, let's move on to the next one here. This is from Corey Johannes, "Say, Chooms, after watching Edgerunners, I've been playing with the idea of homebrewing with cybernetics and humanity loss, such that there is some humanity cost to using the tech, offset by suppressants." Okay, so the, they want to ask what our take is on the idea of suppressants that you see in, uh, Edgerunners?
I can't answer that question, because I'm currently working on a book about that question.
Ooh, Corey.
Today is Black Chrome, today is Black Chrome's day, and not a day to talk about that book. Sorry. Um, I'm sure your homebrew is awesome. If you, if you want, you know, answers on what you've homebrewed, include your homebrew in your question. You know, hell yeah, homebrew it up.
There you go.
Also, we have a channel on our Discord, and I'm pretty, do you, do you have a homebrew channel in your Discord too, John John?
Of course.
Those are great places to go, um, to get answers to these questions. Um, uh, and there's just awesome members of the community in there all the time, writing feedback or just providing, "Hey, man, that looks cool."
Yeah.
Uh, anything, you know, it's, might help.
Yeah, if you're asking me as somebody who's not-
I'm hoping to answer that question in a very good way in the future.
There you go. Uh, well, if you're asking me, I do homebrew. I don't write for Artel Saurian, so I can just give you my dumb idea off the top of my head. But according to the show, it looks like to me that the people that take the suppressants need it to be able to not go cyber psycho. So if that's what you're, if you're trying to introduce that to your game and giving it to a player, the player's kind of like addicted to a drug, basically, you know? And whenever they don't have the drug, they go cyber psycho. So if that's what you're trying to do, I think that that can lead to disaster personally. Um, but if you want to give them like, you know, 1d6 extra humanity healing with the suppressing, you could do something like that, you know what I mean? You could introduce something like that. Um, but it doesn't seem like a sustainable mechanic to me, so I can't wait to see what you guys have in store for it. That's it.
I'm done.
Okay, so this next one is from Eraser, "What's the action economy for switching armor mid-battle, and what about subdermal armor?"
I don't think you can switch subdermal armor mid-battle.
Gotcha.
That would, it's under your skin. That would be
Yeah.
Be ripped your skin off. That would take-
Surgery.
Minutes, probably.
Yeah.
And, um, I, I, okay, you don't mean that. Um, you, you mean, it doesn't take an action to switch my armor from another piece of armor? So when you get damaged, um, every bit of armor you're wearing takes the same SP panel, uh, it takes the same damage to it.
Mm-hmm.
You're wearing a flak vest, and then you have subdermal underneath it. The flak vest is a 15, the subdermal is an 11, and you get shot through the flak vest. Then, you know, the subdermal goes down to 10, and the flak vest goes down to 14. This is to stop something that was in a previous edition called armor stacking. Um, which was a very real problem, uh, that was then in, in a later edition, like, hey, man, you don't want to do this, please don't do this, was like, Mike wrote in that paragraph, please stop.
Yeah.
Please stacking armor. You look like the Michelin Man. I believe the term Michelin Man is in that book to describe people wearing like, I have twelve booties on that are all armored.
Um, yeah, the armor layer.
And I wear.
Yeah, yeah, like.
So that's what happened. And if you do want to put on a fresh, you know, flak vest, that's an action. You know, that's, that's, that's not an interact with object. You're taking it off and putting it back up. I, it doesn't say in the, I believe somewhere it says something about equipping armor somewhere.
In red, in the Red Core Rulebook?
I, I do not know if it fully spells it out, but that is a very large bit of, that is definitely an action.
Yeah.
Not, uh, interact with object.
Yeah, if we're staying consistent, uh, you know.
And then putting on another shirt, that's two things.
Yeah. I mean, think about how long it would take you to switch armor. It would be like about three seconds. You know, if you do it really fast.
And they are three second rounds.
Exactly. It's an action. All right, there you go. Uh, this is from Risk. Uh, can a driver of a bike with enhanced interface plug integration and bulletproof glass fail to evade an attack targeted at them or a passenger and still have the bulletproof glass block the damage?
Hmm. No. Pick.
You gotta pick?
I think you gotta pick. I, you're either in cover or you're bulletproof glass sounds is covered, right?
I would have to look it up. Uh, the proof glass. Instead of providing no protection, all glass on the vehicle is now considered to be cover, uh, fifteen HP. If upgraded a second time, you could get it to thirty HP. All windows on the vehicle sustain damage individually.
Okay, I'm gonna go to, wait, let me open this up and I'll look up the text of enhanced air plus bug integration. That was my first thought, you know, but let's see if it's right, right?
Let's see.
I have to look it up too.
I got it here if you want me to read it. It's on page one sixty-five. Uh, when you use your interface plugs to drive your bike with this upgrade, if you can dodge bullets, reflex eight or higher, and you, a passenger on your bike or your bike are targeted by an attack that you could dodge or otherwise avoid on foot, you can attempt to dodge or avoid the attack with your evasion skill.
Yeah, so.
And then there's something about explosions, which actually has to do with cover as well.
Yeah, but that only counts if it goes through.
Exactly.
Okay. So I think what happens is they're trying to shoot. It depends where they are, right? Right? Like, um, let's just assume the guy is on the street in front of you. Um, and you have a front windshield on your bike. Uh, they shoot the bike and I can then choose a defense. They would be shooting the cover. But I'm choosing a defense and I miss my defense, then it hits the cover. It works the way you think it does.
Yeah.
Um, it is a, you know, it's, it's one of those. Um, I wrote the sentence to be very specific and it turns out that it, there you go.
Yeah. Look at you.
Look at you. I, I, I have to apologize. I did write that. I think we're going on two, three years.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Years now. Wrote that a long time ago.
Yeah, there's, look, that, this is what the show's all about. People ask questions about the little things that they're, you know, it took three years for somebody to ask that question, basically, so.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You know what I mean? All right, so this next question is from.
Same. Do not worry, you are sane. It does work the way you think it does.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's just one of those granular things. All right, this is from Genghis Sean. We love that name here. I have, I have an exec player who wants to invest money in the stock market in order to have long-term gains. He has an eight intelligent character with points in accounting and business, et cetera, so it definitely makes sense for his character to do so. Does the mayor of Balancedown with his infinite wisdom and economics degree have any tips for making a system of rules for investing in the stock market in red? Well, does he?
Infinite wisdom.
It never ends.
They said infinite?
Infinite and be your economics degree.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's, it's the infinite and then there's the finite, I understand. It's the infinite power squeezed through a tiny undergraduate degree.
Look, we're gonna open the door of economy, walk in and then it's an infinite universe.
Out of BS, okay? So, it's all with a grain of salt. Um, I mean, if he's investing in one company, then you don't need to make a system for it. You just say what happens to that company and you do a story thing. If he has a broad spread out portfolio, you know, like you're supposed to, um, you know, in one company is basically gambling. In fact, if he's only investing in one company and you don't want to handle it, make it gambling.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, but if he's diversified, uh, then I, I think honestly, I think that too is a, how long is your game gonna last, right? Um, if your game is like, this is, it takes a long time to make a return on the stock market. Um, and realistically, the amount of money you would need to see a a big change is a, in, in a very short time is, is a lot of money.
Yeah, the stock market is a long game. You're talking about when we play Cyberpunk Red, we're sitting down, even with downtime, we don't really go past like a month of in-game time. You know, and that, that could be sessions and sessions of playing. And, um, trying to figure out how much money you made on a stock in a month isn't really, uh, consistent with what the stock market is all about.
Now, I suspect if he's trying to put a bunch of money in and then try to do something that tanks their stock and then profit off of it, then that's just a part of a heist. That's not a mechanic, that's a you thing. That's, that's the game master has to figure that out. And it's all about how big was the action that they did, how much money did they put in? Don't tell, this is key, do not tell them the results of their action before they invest. Have them say what they're going to do and then do it. Then you get to decide how cool the thing they did was and how much you want to reward it or how much they'd get. You know, but it barely moved the stock.
Yeah.
Um.
That's more interesting if they actually have a hand in tanking a stock with a heist that they did or something they like, you know, they hit a corporate building, you know?
But if they're doing a slow overtime thing, then I would say, um, I mean, is this player is essentially just putting money down for, um, to be, what is it? Um, just a role play.
Yeah.
Um.
I would definitely not, not disregard it though, because if they're putting all these points in it, that's something that they care about, so do something.
Do something, yeah.
But, you know, figure out how you can make it work, uh, logically and for them to be happy about it too. Cause think about it, if they're trying to like day trade.
If you want a mini game out of it, um, one, if they're day trading over the course of a week, that's hustle, that's nothing but a hustle.
There you go.
If they're, if they have a lot of money over a long-term thing and they put a lot, enough in, I'm talking five thousand minimum, then maybe they roll, they roll a check at the beginning of the month and they get to do a free hustle as if they were a level one exec. If they want to increase their exec level for doing that hustle, maybe they have to put in another five grand.
There you go. It would also be really cool if a corporate comes along and tells the player, hey, why don't you run my, basically I'll, I'll invest and you tell me what to do with the money and I'll give you a cut. And then you can have things go well for a little while and then things go very poorly. And in the world of cyberpunk, if you cross a corporate, your life is on the line.
How about, how about a corporate comes to you with a bunch of money they want you to invest? And the money is fake. But it's not fake, uh, what is it? It's not fake like fiat currency. It's fake digital currency.
Oh, the worst kind.
Somebody actually figures out how to do fake Bitcoin. And they go into little, they're going to bits and they're, they're, you're just playing with a hornet's nest because somebody's gonna figure out this is all fucked at some point and then everybody you work with is gonna want you dead.
Yeah.
And you're just the guy that's trying to, trying to make the money in the midterm.
It's amazing. Okay. All right, I hope that answered your question. Let's see here.
Answered your question.
Yeah. Okay, uh, I want to find one that's gonna be a little bit esoteric.
Ooh, esoteric, I like it.
Okay. I like this one. Uh, this is from New Blood. Howdy, John John and James. Love the show, but were, was wondering, why would you ever invest in the skill language, street slang? I can understand how knowing other languages is useful, but I can't really think of a common use case for investing in them.
Hmm. Um, so like before, we had this, we just had this question about this guy who's investing in, in, uh, accounting, right? And he wants to do that for a very specific reason. Oh, he's gonna try to play the stock market and cook some books and all this stuff. Um, when you're investing in language, street slang, you're kind of, um, you're doing some liberal, liberal arts stuff. I, I went to a liberal arts college, I should not get that word wrong. Um, um, you're investing in some real liberal arts stuff, right? Like you want the street knowledge. Um, basically you're, you're gonna have the cool slang. And there has to be, you have to value that. This is the ultimate style over substance. You will never say chum when you meant chumba with that high skill. If you jack that skill all the way up, maybe you can start making words that the NPCs will have to use because you're so cool. You're gonna be the one telling them that they're a jive turkey, okay? Um, this is a, this is, this question, it comes into one ear like, why would I do this skill? And it comes out of this ear like, what would I want to, how would I roleplay a character with that skill? Um, if you're willing to put skill points down for that, now some may call it a meme. Uh, but I would call it, uh, a heavy, important character piece, uh, that is sure to, uh, like, so you could use it as, uh, honestly, it's one of those skills that's best used as a complimentary skill. Uh, you could use it when you're writing poetry. Street poetry. Uh, you could probably write some pretty sick bars with that skill. Um, and you would use that as a complimentary skill to composition. It's called composition still, right?
Uh, complimentary. Oh, for the, for the, the skill, yeah, yeah, composition. Yeah.
Composition, right? Um, you could, uh, you could use this street knowledge to, um, probably get a street, uh, complimentary skill on your streetwise bonus. Um, you could do a fair number of things with it now that I'm thinking about it. Uh, the real question is, we give you the tools to do whatever you want. Um, this tool, maybe you don't think is so useful. Maybe that just means it's not very useful to you. Um, somebody else, there are some heavy character role players, okay? Yeah, you'll go to a cyberpunk game and then there'll be one, one dude that's not there, right? And the hologram will appear. Hello?
Yeah, there you go.
I'm the Netrunner. Oh, I thought we were playing V3, shit.
Oh, Jesus Christ.
Anybody remember that from V3? That was one of the coolest parts.
Yeah, exactly. Uh.
Times, guys.
We don't, we don't talk about V3, okay, James?
Good!
It is great. It's wonderful. It's amazing.
The writing is still good.
Uh, the writing's always gonna be good. The complaint was never about the writing. All right, so. Uh, so what I would say to you, New Blood, was, um, the idea, you gotta ask yourself, why are you investing in a skill anyway? What is the idea behind investing in all the other skills you're investing in? If you come from the perspective that you're trying to make the most efficient character when it comes to combat and social encounters and tech or blah, 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 yeah, you might not want to put that many points into this skill. I understand that. But if your perspective is, perspective is completely different where you're like, hey, I want to make the most street guy I can make. I want him to have high levels in language streets, street slang. I want him to have high streetwise. I want him to have high local expert. And, you know, you want him to, this is a character idea that you have in your head. That's what it's there for, really, you know? Mechanically, if, if Ja- the James's advice, if you wanted to like actually mean something and help you in some way, complimentary skills is what it is. There's a lot of skills like that, accounting, bureaucracy, there's a lot of those kinds of skills. But on the other side of the coin, you know, actually giving this skill the respect that it deserves, it's for the narrative folks that want to do something interesting outside of the box. And that want to come at the game master and say, I know everybody's doing perception checks, I know everybody's doing, you know, uh, general knowledge checks. I want to use my street slang to solve this problem. And, and it leads to really fun situations where that player is like talking to people in funny ways and you guys are just standing there like, what the hell are they even saying? You know? You want to flip flop on my two side chum? It's like, what just, what just happened? I don't know, but these guys know what's going on. Yeah, and it's like, we got it, we got a car. What? How did we get a car? You know what I mean? The, so that's, that's what it really is. That's all it is. How do you like that?
I, I don't know about flip flop.
You don't want to flip flop on my two side chum? Come on.
Sorry, I don't think we flip flopped the two side here. I don't think we.
Uh, well, you know, that's why, um, you're not on my level, chum.
I, I know, and my street slang is much lower than yours apparently.
Uh, I got one here for Jay, so maybe next time he comes on, we'll ask him.
It, save it. I mean, because.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a good one. It's a good one, so.
For Jay, sorry.
Yeah, it's all good. Of course, that's, I mean, there's literally, it's asking Jay, so, uh, he, well, we'll ask next time. So this is from Duffy. I have another rules question. If there are multiple net runners in a system and they're faced with a password, do they all need to beat the DV to move further? Or can one guy do it and then tell the other guy, oh, it sprinkles?
Word, if you know the password, you don't need the DV anymore. So if those people don't like each other and one of them is gonna break it, not share the password with the other guy, then, then he, they both need to break it individually, right? But if one of them is like, um, it's albatross, the password is albatross. Then, then you're good.
Yeah. And then you can even do that, you know, netrunner to netrunner, direct IM, right?
Yeah.
Okay, how much time do we have? Do we have, uh, we can do one more. Let's do one more.
One more.
Let's see here. Okay. Let's talk about other forms of movement, page one sixty-nine.
Okay.
It says, when jumping from standing, you can clear half the distance that you could with a running start. If you get, if you get jump boosters, does it remove this penalty? Like, can you jump from standing and clear the same distance as you could from a running start? Or does it only remove the jumping from a running, with a running start? All costs two meters of movement for every meter traveled or two squares for every one square.
Okay. Checking jump boosters. Jump booster, page three, six, seven. Bottom of the page, it's called jump booster, not jump boosters.
That's why I couldn't find it.
Hydraulics and legs, it negates the movement penalty when jumping. That is what it does.
There you go. So just the movement penalty, uh, so it has nothing to do with any running start or any of that calculation.
Movement penalty. That's it.
That's it. Okay, sounds good. Okay, um, I think that's it. Uh, I'm trying to see if there's any other ones we can tackle without. Okay, sounds good. Okay, um, I think that's it. Uh, I'm trying to see if there's any other ones we can tackle without going over time. Uh, this is from Angel Cruz. Hey, John John, I got another question. If an enemy combatant drops a smoke grenade. And they have infrared sights and you don't, are you still able to dodge? Uh, we're having a disagreement about this on the Discord because it says minus four for actions taken in the smoke. However, James has stated in the past that also scenario exists in the book where an enemy that doesn't know. You, where you are can, can't dodge people. I don't know if you said that in the past or anything.
So it's obscurement. It's not blackness.
Yeah, it's not concealment. It's obscuring.
Total concealment. It's obscurement. That's why it's a minus and not a no. So if you are ever in like a, a, like a. Like a sauna, sauna situation, like a, if you've ever been in like a steam bath and you really can't because it's just white. Then that's a no, no see anybody situation. Um, but smoke grenades do not do that. Smoke grenades provide. That's why it's a minus four, not a.
Do you need line of sight to dodge?
Um, you need to know an attack is coming in order to dodge.
Can you have like an instinct, like a sense that you're gonna be hit and you kind of just like in the moment dodge? Obviously add a negative, you know?
No. You need to see an attack coming to dodge it.
That's that whole stealth versus perception check thing, right? Okay. Okay, sounds good. Uh, all right. That's it, James. We did it. We talked about Black Chrome. We answered some questions. We answered a lot of questions from the community. So you guys go ahead and keep plugging in those questions, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com. We are happy to answer as many as we can. We love them. We appreciate you guys getting involved. Uh, and, um, anything else you want to tell the people about Black Chrome, anything?
More Black Chrome, uh, spoilers are coming. Um, keep an eye out. And, uh, next time, next John John show, there will be another. So, you know, put in your calendar. Look forward to it. Um, and we've got plenty of exciting announcements in the future, including personal ones. So, uh. Keep a, keep an eye out for that as well. Uh, and, uh. Other than that, have a great day, you know? If you still live with your mother, hug her.
So hug your mom, you know?
When you move out, you'll, uh, you'll have much less time to spend with, with each other.
Yeah, hug your mom, hug your dad. Hug your dog, hug your brother.
Call your little brother, call your big brother.
I wasn't ready to cry today, but all right, James. All right, guys. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Uh, Night City Council is adjourned. We'll see you guys on the next one. Thank you. Bye.